Cobb meeting to order at 6:10. And first order of business is to stand for pledge. Just please, if you're here, please.
I'll take care of it. I've got tape.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a [inaudible] with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Okay. We have nothing to report from close session. So let's start. Five point one, public hearing. The sixth grade academy at Pedelema Junior High School charter school renewal charter petition. Do we have somebody here that can talk about that? But put them on hold.
Okay.
So as you know, the sixth grade academy is one of our charters, one of our internal charters. And they're up for their five year renewal. So their charter expires at the end of June 2019. So this is bringing forward two to the board, a charter petition that has been updated for all of the changes in law that have happened over the last, you know, X number of years. It's the board's last action. It's also had a lot of academic review to take a look. I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so when a charter is up for renewal, they have to meet certain criteria, academic criteria specifically. So we have to do a review of how the charter is doing academically in English and math based off of the CASP scores. It used to be off of the old API, which still exists in EDco even though it hasn't been assessed for six years. So it's just one of those things that's still lingering in EDco. We have to do a comparison of the school as compared to the district as a whole, as well as if this charter didn't exist and students had attended other schools, how did those schools do academically? So you compare where they're at. So we have quite a mix of kids, the sixth grade academy. The most we have at one district school, from one district school is five from Vala Vista. The rest, we have four from Pen Grove, three from a couple of schools. And we have a number from outside districts and a number from outside the state and/or other districts in the state that weren't anywhere local. So it's kind of an interesting mix. I think a lot of people assume most of the sixth grade academy students come from Vala Vista. And they don't, you know, just a small portion. So we have to provide that academic comparison. And it does show that our students at the academy are meeting and/or exceeding the performance of their peers at other district schools. So that's the main question.
So as is required for every charter school petition renewal or charter school petition, the board is required to conduct a public hearing to give us feedback on the community on the petition. And then we'll come back. The next move, action, as action.
So is there anybody who wishes to speak to that charter petition?
For the sixth grade academy.
For the sixth grade academy. Okay.
We'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, whatever. Adoption and approval of the agenda for June 11, 2019.
I'm going to approve the agenda for what I'm today's.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Cool. Okay.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, thank you. Chris, you're on.
I'm sorry, I have budget revision number three. So I have copies of the budget revision. Here. And so.
Was this the same thing that was in the [inaudible]? Was it the same thing that took it out?
Probably. It's not mine. Do you have a preliminary budget? What's the preliminary budget? Okay, so as you're aware, we have been working diligently on preparing the budget for 1920. So as part of that process, we start with reviewing the 1819 budget because of course that really is the foundation for what we do in 2019-20. So what we've done here is we've gone through and we've updated our budget for information that we have so far. I'm not going to go through the narrative. The narrative is there for your pleasure to look at when you have a moment. I'm going to focus on the spreadsheets. So the first, our budget, as you know, the general fund is made up of three sections, three parts. The unrestricted part of the budget, the restricted part of the budget, and then the combined, a combination of both. The combined general fund. I focus mostly on the unrestricted because that's where the board has more discretion. When it comes to the restricted part of the budget, that's where we have Title I, but Title II, Title III, and the other Title III and Title IV, where they all come with very specific purposes and strings attached. So the first three pages are the unrestricted. And the way this breaks down is I'm showing you the adopted budget call made, the first two budget revisions, which were at first interim and second interim, and then this budget revision and how it compares to the last budget revision, which is your variance column. The first page is our revenues. And it's broken down by major categories of revenue. So we have our LCFF funding. That's the first major category where you see the total is 67.2 million. And then we have federal, state, local, and then other financing sources, which I'll talk about. So when you look at the variances for the first section, which is the LCFF, it's really not important, the variances for the various categories. What's important is what's the net impact? Because the way that the LCFF is funded is it's funded by local property taxes first and then it's backfilled through state aid. But you can see we're actually reducing by $160,000 our LCFF funding. And that's because when we brought the budget revision in March, we may not know what our final P2 ADA is going to be. That's finalized at the end of March. We were still projecting that. And our ADA actually did now 30 ADA. Twenty-seven of that was specifically here at Pedelema's schools. And two and a half, two and a half to three was for the SCO program. Kids, Pedelema Kids Educated SCO. So their ADA, which we also claim, went down a bit.
And the COLA went down as well.
This is for this year. So no, the COLA has not changed at 3.7. So, you know, that was a little bit alarming because our attendance rates actually dropped pretty dramatically. I really felt that we were being fairly conservative in our estimates. We usually take P1, our period one attendance, and we project up P2. And our attendance rates actually came in pretty low this year. So they dropped in at almost every single school. And what we're trying to do is help educate folks that for every day a student misses, we lose $60. And if our average attendance rate is roughly 95%, which means 5% of the time, or roughly nine days a year, on average, students are missing school. That's a big deal, both academically, constructionally, and from a fiscal perspective. So we're going to be trying to work hard with our principals to help educate our families that we really want kids in school. And when kids miss school, that the district really does get home financially and also their students academically. We don't want kids in school if they're sick.
Right.
But we have a lot of students that are not attending for other reasons.
Pen Grove doing a really good job of pushing that and accomplishing why. So maybe other principals can help.
If kids, do we lose ADA if a kid takes out a contract? Like they're going to be on vacation and they get a contract and they're going to...
It's a great question. And honestly, I've analyzed the data. We have a significantly high number of students who do short-term independent study, which we're talking about. The challenge is this, if the short-term independent study contract is followed exactly as it's intended to be, the student comes back on the day of their return, they turn in the equivalent amount of work, we're able to claim that ADA.
The challenge is.
Too many students don't come back and turn in today. They come back and therefore we're not able to claim ADA. So it's kind of catch 22.
That's another form of education.
Absolutely.
Make them take out, make them do their work.
So you can see there's not a lot of other significant variances. There's a variance in other local revenues. That's because we collect local donations and budget them as we receive them throughout the year. That's that 8699 object. You can see a significant increase in contributions to restricted programs. That is a combination of putting about a million dollars of one-time money, the state funding, into a resource, setting it aside in a resource for future one-to-one device purchases. It's offset a bit by a reduction of special education contribution that we're projecting out both for South County and for our own internal special ed. So that's why it doesn't show exactly a million dollars. So that is, you'll see below that ending fund balance, the components, that we took the residual amount of the one-time state funds we received this year. Now we got about 1.2 million, almost 1.3 million. We had set that aside in a pension contingency. And we're basically recommending eliminating that contingency and setting aside in a restricted resource to purchase one-to-one devices in both 2019-20 and beyond.
The legislature is considering a broadband infrastructure grant. Would that help cover some of the refresh? Or is that mostly for servers?
It's all for hardware, infrastructure. So none of that would be for either student devices or for teachers' devices. That could help us in that, remember, we are doing a big bandwidth or broadband upgrade using dark fiber, going to dark fiber, leveraging our federal E-rate dollars and matching that with our bond funds. So that could help free up some bond money if that grant was able to pay for it and not the local bond.
Okay, definitely.
So that's the helping process. Going on to the next page, here's where we start on the expenditure side of the budget. So it's broken down, our budget's broken down into certificate salaries, classified employee benefits, and then other operating expenses. So you can see there's some fluctuations here. Primarily, it's going to be related to capturing savings from substitute costs. So we're going in analyzing our sub-costs and being able to either increase those. In this case, we were able to reduce them down a bit. And also, we have salary compensation agreements with CSCE and with management. And so we budgeted all of those in this particular budget revision. And then the salary changes are indicative of any, the benefit changes are indicative of any salary changes. So consumables, those are fluctuating regularly, a lot of these.
Do you want the moment projections as well?
That will come with the 1920 budget?
Yeah. Do you want that though, right?
So there's some fluctuations, a lot of that relates to site budgets. They're moving money out of materials and supplies and moving it down into transportation for field trips or whatnot. There is an increase in legal fees. And that is primarily related to all of these charter renewals. So as you know, we've done a lot of charter renewal. And there was a significant amount, the sixth grade academy charter renewal, significant amount. And then I would also say some of the Safeway work that we did also impacted our legal fees. Field trips, again, that's from local donations. Not a lot of other significant changes. Utilities you'll see went down about 40,000. And you'll see how we then project increases next year when we get to that category. Going to the next page, capital equipment is primarily cost of costs?
Yes.
And that's about it. Most of the other variances are pretty minimal. So you can see overall, we went from a positive 206,000 to a deficit of 824,000. But remember that deficit, we created by one-time contribution to restricted programs, we've got a million dollars, right? So it's okay to have deficit spending if you can explain it with a thoughtful spending down for one-time reason. If you look down below in the components of ending fund balance, you got one-time pension contingency went from a million thirty to zero because we eliminated it when we made the contribution. Okay? So that money was set aside. And now we're taking that set aside and moving it up through the budget process. So I'm not going to go significantly through the restricted budget. There are some revisions. You'll see the offset to the contribution. You'll see we're taking down some revenues. Mostly we're projecting revenues for next year. There's some significant reductions in materials and supplies. And that's primarily related to the fact that we are putting it into the ending fund balance so we can use it in the parcel tax and in lottery to then balance those budgets because the parcel tax is not adequate to fund all of the programs. So we're taking down carryover this year, projecting and moving it into next year. So you'll also see there's some savings in special education costs. And that's why we were able to bring that contribution down. So the 5100, those are special education contracts. The 5802 to 5809, that's primarily SCO contract costs for the students that were in the SCO programs. So the most significant thing here is if you look at page three, that the excess of revenues over expense, the variance of 1.190, 1,190. Basically, we're throwing 100, a million 190,000 dollars into the ending fund balance. When we get to the preliminary budget, you'll see how that becomes our projected ending fund balance, which is what helps us balance our restricted, things like the parcel tax. With that, there was also online all the other funds, revision for the other funds. That's all projected to be positive. So I'm happy to answer any questions. But we're recommending that we take action to approve budget revision number three. And again, that becomes the foundation for our preliminary budget this year. Questions?
These are, at this point in June, these are actuals pretty much.
They're close, they're close. And they don't represent necessarily savings from open positions and so on and so forth. But they definitely represent a pretty close estimation. We're not quite there yet, so.
So this is, would be 7.2?
Yes, this is budget revision.
Preliminary budget for...
No, this is the budget revision number three.
That we just got?
No.
Right, but this one that we just got?
Will be 7.2, yes.
Okay.
But 7.1, oh, I see, the actual will be down. Would you like me to go into the 2019-20 preliminary budget? If you want to. So online, there's a little bit more online, there's what's called the Common Message. And there's also, let me pull it up here. There's also the narrative, which I don't have either. So the narrative kind of describes some of the major assumptions that we're using to build this budget. And, you know, as I've said many times, we don't have a crystal ball when we're looking forward. And when we're building a preliminary budget for the upcoming year, we're doing several different things. We're collecting as much data as we can, related to things like property and liability, which is going up by 190,000, which I'll show you in a moment. We're doing things like working with our principals to project out what's our enrollment going to be? How many students are going to be in TK, K, all the way through 12th grade? And then we use that to project, how many days are they going to show up? What's the attendance rate going to be? How much ADA are we going to claim? So if you look at the enrollment projections, this is kind of the outcome of what we projected. And it really kind of goes through and it shows you our historical trend for SEBEDS, the California Basic Education Data System, which is that one day in October that every district and charter in the state of California reports their enrollment. And it shows you how we're doing and what our trends look like. Because I do a lot of trend analysis to use those types of predictions. So if you look at 0506, you can see we had over 7,900 students. And if you look at our current enrollment projection in 1920, we're projecting 7,549. So we're literally 350 students lower than we were 10, 11, 12 years ago. So, but if you look at the last three or four or five years, we're fairly stable. You know, if you look at 1314, 7,601, 7,492, 7,500, 7,480, 7,434, 7,472, which is our current month eight, and then 7,549. So that I would consider fairly flat at the moment. You're always going to see some fluctuations, a little up and a little down. What I've done here is I've also given you what the breakdown looks like, TK through third grade, fourth through sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, 12. Because when we're projecting out our revenue, we have to use the different base per grade stamp. So TK through third grade gets one base amount, fourth through sixth, seventh and eighth, and ninth through 12. This is based on the best information we have right now. We don't know until we see the whites of their eyes how many kids are going to show up and how many kids are going to show up at grade level. So as soon as school starts, we track enrollment very closely that first six to 10 days. And if necessary, we could make adjustments in staffing if we needed to. We hope to not do that. But we, you know, we will be tracking it very carefully. So this drives the ADA that we're now projecting, which drives the majority of our revenue.
Sorry, Chris, could you, what are those three rows starting at 2018, 19, S, D, H, H, and P?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Thank you for raising it. So when, in SEBEDS, special day class students in a more restrictive environment, non-public school students who are in non-public schools, especially even in a more restricted environment, and home hospital students, for ADA purposes, we track those separately in our current enrollment and future. But SEBEDS lumps them all together. So there is, so we don't separate them out. You'll see there, that last number in 15, 16, 16, 17, 18, see that 10, 9, and 4? Right above the 7,500 and 7,400. See how it's ungraded? Those are generally your non-public school students.
If they count towards our [inaudible].
Because we pay the bills for that. So we collect attendance. We collect attendance from every single non-public school and every single student that's ours that they educate with. We break it out for purposes of projecting ADA enrollment because the ADA, the attendance rates are very different. So, but great question. Any other questions on the enrollment projections? You can also see, I'm assuming, we're also kind of taking a peek to say, how do we look in '22, '23? Which is a long way away. But for planning purposes, both from do we have the adequate number of classrooms to, you know, where do we see ourselves going from an enrollment perspective? You can see that we continue to be fairly flat. 7,549, 7,554, 7,502. And then we start to decline a little bit. But the out-years become harder and harder to predict. And I am assuming a certain level of attrition at the secondary level between grade levels. Okay?
Okay.
So I'm going to now go and look at, I'm going to focus on the spreadsheets. Again, same format. Budget revision number three is the last budget revision you saw on the former one. Again, it becomes the foundation, preliminary budget variance between the two. You can see we're estimating 86 additional, 88. That's pretty significant, 7268. We're hoping we're being conservative here. But as you can see in our last budget revision, I wasn't conservative enough this current year. You can see the change is 2.8 million dollars. Again, the variances between the categories in that LCFF revenue doesn't really matter. It's the net impact that's important. You can see the changes, the biggest change is mandated cost reimbursements. We're backing out that one point, almost $2 million in one-time state aid for that backlog of state mandates. So it's a reduction in our revenue. And then you can see that other local revenues went down significantly because we budget donations as we receive them generally. But for example, Cherry Valley hasn't found nation. They give us commitment letters. We're committing to funding 15,000 for this, 20,000 for that. So we're building that in. So there will always be some, but the level will be significantly lessing this year. And then you'll see those go up as we proceed through the year. And then you can see the contribution to restricted programs has gone up 107, or has gone down. But that's misleading because if you back out the million dollars, right? In budget revision number three, that was a one-time. Really, our contribution is up 900,000. Does that make sense? Going on to the expenditure side. So the narrative we talked about that we're adding about 5.2 FTE. So if we're projecting more students, then on the natural, we need to add more teachers. So you can see we've got costs associated with that and step and column. We're estimating step and column to be around 500,000 as of this moment. But we have vacant positions that are either still being filled or still being processed. So they're not in the system yet, as we're projecting. So we'll know what our final step and call costs are when we get into September, October. I say September and October because we don't know where all of our column costs are going to be. People are still turning in their units, which then necessitates their movement on the calls. Down below on our employee benefits, you'll see some significant increases in STIRS and PERS. We know what that's about. STIRS is currently 16.28. It's going up, well, in this budget assumption, it's going up to 16.7. But what we just found out from the fiscal services reports we're receiving is that's now estimated to be 17.1. So again, we're not going to recalculate all of the preliminary budget when we bring the adopted. But it's something to take note of, that the STIRS increase is probably not conservative enough, that when we bring our first budget revision, it probably will be going up.
The PERS is going to be more.
Yes. First student contract, that's also going up. We're estimating about a 7% increase. I'm hoping that this is a conservative estimate. We're still working on routing. So we're still working on receiving all of the requests for special education students that will need to be transported. We never know what that is until early August. And even then, probably in September. Leave that, got two materials and supplies because there's significant reductions here. That's because, remember, when we closed the books last year going into 1819, we budgeted $400,000 or $500,000 of one-time carryover that the sites have. So those local grants and donations that the sites are collecting, we preserve that site carryover and we budget that once we close the books. That's one-time expense. So that's an example of how we're pulling that one-time expense out. You can see insurance, there's that $191,000 increase that I was referring to, under 5,400. And you can see we're also estimating our utilities to go up. Water, big piece of utility cost increases. Sewer, another huge increase. We've seen huge increases in sewer. Of course, gas and electricity.
Is there any reason?
Well, water we know is going up because the more we conserve, the less we pay. Then the water department struggles, they raise rates.
Right.
So, yeah.
And if you do, damned if you don't.
So basically, the reward we get for serving is we pay high rates.
Yeah. Awesome.
Again, a lot of the other cost reductions, board election costs. We know we don't have a board election in 1920. So we're taking that out, that becomes a one-time. And then a lot of the other costs here are associated with the one-time donations, with that carryover.
So the next board election is?
It'll be in 2021 fiscal year.
Okay, got it.
So we're moving quickly to the third page, which is really the most important page, which shows us, okay, given all of these sets of assumptions, given everything we've done, how do we look? And when we want to know how we look, we look at that excess of revenues over expense. And the good news is, we're not deficit spending in the preliminary budget. The bad news is, this doesn't include any kind of salary increases for our staff. So, but it's also, this is the preliminary budget. It will hopefully become the adopted budget. And there's a lot of... And there's a lot of information we're gonna get between now and the start of school or now, and that first budget revision that'll come to you December.
And we'll get more of those local donations. Not a huge amount, obviously, but.
Absolutely. You can also see we've reduced some of the contingencies down below. Because we're, we're budgeting another three or four hundred thousand dollars in textbooks in this particular budget. We've reduced the contingency for the curriculum adoptions down from seven hundred to four hundred. And we're continuing to maintain a strong ending fund balance at nine point six million dollars in the unrestricted. I wanna take you to the restricted budget, um, to kind of show you a couple of things that are important here. So I'm looking at page one. If you look at eighty-seven ninety-two down below, it's one of the lower numbers, you'll see an increase of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That's primarily because we're assuming COLA on our AB six oh two special education funding. And if you look at the parcel tax, we're actually increasing, we're actually projecting a slight increase in parcel tax. And part of that is because we know there's a thousand new units, not all of which are individual parcels. Like departments don't count. But there are gonna be additional parcels in which we'll collect for the high schools. And then going on to the next page. Should go on to the very next page. See how we're now showing deficit spending of one point one nine zero? That's that beginning fund balance. And most of that is in the parcel tax and some of the other local grants. So for example, we know we received, not the CSI money, what's the one that's spending the poses? So we received CSI money this year, but the teachers on special assignment, that, that money's gonna support it around next year. So we had to bring down an equivalent amount of revenue deferred, if you will, and then budget it next year in order to actually fund those. So the way deferred revenue works, if we have a federal grant or a state grant, we only recognize the revenue that we spent according to how much we spent. So if we get a grant of a hundred thousand and we've spent fifty thousand, we only recognize fifty thousand of that and we defer the other fifty thousand to next year. So because we know we're not spending a significant amount of those new grants that we just received, we're deferring that money to next year and, and budgeting it. But, but this deficit spending is actually from carryover dollars that we're taking down. We know we're having to spend on the share so that we can actually, excuse me, budget that next year.
I have a question about open positions. Are all the, all those open positions gonna be filled?
We're only budgeting positions that we believe that need to be stopped. But again, if it comes to a teaching position, that, um, it's dependent on students showing up.
Right, okay.
Two years ago, we know that we thought we would have an additional teacher at Pengrove, and the students didn't show up, and we actually, more students showed up at McDowell, and we shifted the FTE from.
So nobody lost a job.
Right. We hadn't hired for that anyway. We made those decisions really at the end of June, early July. So a teacher wasn't actually moved, just the position. So we'll literally be tracking it very closely over the next eighteen months.
Thank you.
So that is the preliminary budget in a nutshell. Again, there's a lot of assumptions and work that goes into this. And as I also just indicated, it's already outdated because the STIRS rate we know is changing. So every day, there's new assumptions coming through, there's new decisions being made. But at a certain point, we have to kind of draw a line and stand, finish the budget. And then immediately, come July first, we start revising the budget based on the new information that we have. Any material changes to our budget created by the final state adoptive budget, we will be bringing back and disposing to the board and to the community the impact on our budget for any of those material changes.
And that happens after July one?
Yes, yeah, forty-five days from July first.
Any, uh, any more questions for Chris? Fabulous job as always. And moving on, comments, uh, from the public. I have one speaker, Jason Miller, did I say that? Did I read that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I need to read the little word.
Of course.
Anyway. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four, members of the public have the right to address the governing board, address the governing board on any items of interest providing relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above regulations govern control, it allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees. The district does have a current policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requested the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully, take notes, and appreciate the value input from the public. So, Chris Miller.
Thank you so much. We just wrote for, uh, I don't know, of course, wanna make sure I am speaking to an agenda's data. He wouldn't rather me speak at that point. This is the better time. I'm speaking to eleven point one.
Cause then you, and you also won't have the time limit.
Right. True. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have Sarah, oh, this is also live out charter, which is an agenda's item. Okay, so we'll. Awesome. Uh, reporting activities and correspondence of the school board. We went to graduations at Pella Mahai, Costa Fonde, Kenner Worth, um, PAX, McNear, all of them. Grant Open House, Avance Graduation, Ed Source Webinar on Funding, Ribs for Kids Judge, Alternative High School Graduation, Live Up Presentation, and Tech Discussion. Okay, next, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a motion?
Of course, we move it in and then we can talk. If you wanna move to pull something off, we can still get everything else.
No, you'll have time. Okay, so I need a motion.
I need to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Comments, discussion.
Comments, I didn't see anything mentioned on the, um, SPSA about, um, like implicit bias training or anything of that nature. So let me ask the full question.
What's that?
Should I, like, fully ask the question? So in all of the single plan for student achievement, they're talking about like different goals to be met. And I didn't see anything about addressing like the harassment or the racism or any of those issues.
So I provided some answers to you earlier today, but you may not have a chance to see it yet. So the SIPSA is required by federal government. It's a requirement of the Ever Students Succeeds Act for any school that receives federal funding. So not every school we have, um, receives federal funding. But as a matter of practice, we usually insist that they follow that planning document and submit one to the board. So, um, the SIPSA is a template from the feds through the state. It was updated this year, and it's purely academics. There are no school culture, school climate sections of the SIPSA. So that's one why you don't see any. Now, the SIPSA is not the only planning document for schools, right? There's compliance with school safety plans, there's the school calendar report cards, and there are other things that schools do that don't necessarily end up in a planning document. So for example, there are lots of school climate efforts initiatives that you wouldn't see in a SIPSA. So just because they're not in there doesn't mean, you know, that's not part of our ongoing discussion and planning. Some of those things you, you'll see in District PD. Some of those things you'll see happen at sites. And clearly, we, we need to continue the discussion and planning. But there's, that's specifically why you don't see it in the SIPSA.
Well, some of them were mentioned, like, this is what we're gonna do to create more student engagement. Or, um, like, I know that truanty rates were mentioned. And previously, we had a discussion about, like, why kids don't come to school. And so I know that some of that was mentioned in some of them. But then I didn't see, like, any sort of resolution, like, in terms of school climate or culture, and how to address those issues.
Yeah, if you look at the sections, um, well, you, you don't see, like, the table of contents. But all of the metrics now, so the template was updated in January to match the dashboard. So the dashboard, the only, um, school climate, if you will, metrics on the dashboard are chronic absenteeism for K eight or, um, suspension rate for, um, for all grades. So it is there in that sense, but not as a general school climate, not as a, um, social, you know, there's no specific social emotional piece. So, I, you know, I, I don't want, I don't want the, the board to think that this isn't something that schools have a focus on and are working on. It's just in this template, unless someone squeezed it, there is a section on PD. So unless they specifically mention anything there, um, if they just follow the template, completing it as is, there's no specific, um, way to address school climate.
And there's nothing in the dashboard on school climate either, is there?
No, well, just the things I mentioned. Suspension rate, chronic absenteeism.
I don't know, I did see in a couple of them that they did mention, again, like, the chronic absenteeism, like, why aren't kids coming to school? Like, I mean, I know it was, um, when we all, well, I don't know, all of us went to the forum at the library, they were talking about school climate there as well, and why a lot of students continue not to attend schools for different reasons. Again, like the racial issues, the sexual harassment issues, not feeling culturally connected to their teachers. And I did see, like, some schools, like Valley Vista was only one that addressed any kind of, like, community building and inclusion and support with their students. So I just, like, seems like some of the schools did and some of them didn't. Some of them mentioned it as part of their plan to address these issues, and most of them did not. So, um, like, I know there's a template, but it seems like some of them addressed it a little bit, and some of them really addressed it, so.
Well, I, I, I think it's good you brought it up. This is definitely something as we work with our principals. So, so this is the first time we've used this online template. The template got updated anyways in January from state. So whether it was the Word doc or the online template, it's the same, it's the same thing. But this is a good thing I can, I can bring up with the principals that those, you know, school climate initiatives, school climate, um, activities should be articulated, and we can talk about where to fit those in. If that's something the board would like to see. Cause you're right, otherwise, where does that exist?
And I think that's kind of a priority for, I, for this board, is my sense that we have a plan to address those issues. Both, both with, with students and with faculty.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see some of those in the upcoming LCAP from a more district scale. But some, some things that I think you might have been speaking to, um, are very, you know, get into site-specific activities. So I, I, I do agree, I think that would be a good idea to articulate that in a plan.
I mean, just even some things, like, I was looking at grant, like, seventy-three percent white, twelve percent Hispanic, but like, the rate of suspensions grew for, like, that small subgroup. I mean, so that is an issue as well. Like, how are they gonna address that? Are they even acknowledging that? I mean, they did because they put it in there, but that, that's an issue. This small group is being suspended this much more over a given year.
And that's K through six.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is a little scary.
Yeah. Same with, um, with McNear, it was the same type of issue there as well. Yeah, so. As well as, like, the imbalance, like, Crossroads and the other alt ed, like, very heavily Hispanic or Latino. Like, why, why is that? But then we also, like, took positions away from that school last year. I'm sorry, last board meeting. So I, I, I just see all these as issues that I'm hoping we'll continue to address and at least acknowledge.
Well, part of some of the, some of the work that's been done with this grant is gonna be a deep dive into that as to really looking by each individual story. And how did, you know, how did you, how did you land, these students land in certain, certain schools? And when did this happen?
Why so many? Why three of the four groups?
Right. Were there triggering mechanisms that could have been put in place? Or, um, or was this, was the cap, was something cast more in stone by the time we moved to seventh grade? So we need to look at that.
So, so I, I'm attending currently today, tomorrow, the next day, um, the SCO Summer Institute with two TOSAs so far, two of the three. And the principal from Carpen-Sonoma, Craig Thompson, to train and learn all about this improvement science work. And this is exactly the stuff we talked about this morning. You know, how many times do you end a school year? Whether it's this data, and now that we have the reliable dashboard data and part of assessing school and planning, you know, how many times in the past you end a, you end a school year, you have some kids on grade level, some kids, you know, reading comprehension on grade level, some don't. And what do we do? We just move on, we just move on to the next year. So what, what do we do with that information? How do we react to that? So part of the CSI work at the TOSAs, part of the work differentiated assistance with the county is to help support us with this. So we have this data, we've been talking about the, the Hispanic student population that's at San Antonio, Carpen-Sonoma, and why that is so high.
And why their scores are.
Their low scores are low.
So that's, that's definitely on the radar, but this is, this is the first time that we're gonna be doing a systematic response. You know, you don't just move on to the next year, look at the next data. So what do you, what do you do about it? What can you learn from it?
Yeah, I mean, seeing plans for each campus, I mean, I think that's probably unrealistic to ask for in the short term, but having that be a goal to look for every year of, like, addressing cultural climate issues that are coming up on each campus and setting up a plan for moving forward. Like, not necessarily with this template or with the dashboard, but like, clearly tracking suspensions and other things.
And then, and then I will add, I mean, it, there's, there's some institutional history that, um, you may not be aware of. But, so when, when I came three years ago, these SIPSA's were more of a rubber stamp.
Right, sure.
You know, the schools had to fill them out, but they weren't really used to direct any type of school efforts, so.
Which seems like a big waste of time.
Chris and I, my director Kim, over the last couple of years have, have been using this as a tool for, you know, systematic change at the sites. You know, they should be looking at their data, they should be responding, they should be making plans. They should be spending their funds in accordance to how do they meet the needs of their students. So, you know, I'm happy to say we're at the point now where these discussions are continuously happening, happening at the schools, through the school site councils and other groups, which wasn't always the focus. So we're moving in the right direction, but, you know, your, your point is, do we know that we're gonna continue to have more?
Well, and it's also sometimes when you're stuck in this little format, it's hard to really.
Right, that's why I think a whole.
You can't get creative. You know what I mean? You can't. There's not a lot of room for explanation.
I don't know, that was a fifty-page document.
I know, and I, I read a lot of them, but, um, it's just when you're, it's just, it's, it's the federal-state format, that's very constraining.
Yeah, you, I mean, you definitely bring up a good point. I mean, the, the state keeps looking at how to revise the LCAP to make it meaningful to stakeholders. So it's gone from, you know, a ninety-page document to a, you know, eighty-eight-page document. They keep trying to do it, so they're gonna change it again next year. And if you, if you, if you don't, you know, if you don't look through the forest for the trees, you get stuck in the compliance rut and the important things, like some things you're mentioning, don't appear anywhere. So I, I do think it's good that we plan and document these things, not just, cause right now, they're happening. They're happening, you know, to different degrees at different schools. But purposely making part of our plan is a, is a good, good thing.
I think that the, when the dashboard or the metrics came out and we're talking about, um, you know, how we were gonna measure our sites, I think that the, the one piece that really kind of rubbed educators the wrong way was the school engagement. Because when we talk about school engagement, if I talked about that with Sandra, we would be talking about something completely different. We wouldn't be talking about attendance. We would be talking about what's taking place in the classroom. We would be talking about what's taking place in the classroom. And there tends to be a philosophy at the state level that academic, academic turnarounds in academics or raising achievement is a skill set, is a skill-centered, if you're dealing with just content and content-level skills, you're gonna raise achievement, when in, in actuality, it's a lot of things. And if you, and, and I know schools that have focused only, only for the first couple of years on culture and climate and have significantly raised student achievement because of just that. It doesn't mean that you need to not focus on the academic piece, because you do, but you need to focus on the culture and climate just as much. And I've seen folks, it's, it's, it's not either or, but it's both, you gotta be able to do that. So, so I think we, we, we have turned the corner at, at least taking, putting a lens on data. And I think there's also ways that we're gonna be able to look at culture and, and climate and crunch that also through our data so that we can get a sense of where, you know, really where we are. Because I think that, you know, one of the issues that we've, we've addressed and talked a lot about at the high school level has been the culture of complacency with students, which is a whole other conversation that maybe is part of a bigger picture planning conversation. But that is when, in our focus groups with parents, that was the number one concern that we heard, concern that we heard was that things were so comfortable that are we really preparing them to, 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 for that next level of, the next step in their, in their future?
And one more thing, again, I asked you earlier, but just for the general public. So you break down the numbers of like student demographics, but not for staff demographics. Is there a reason why?
Again, that's just a requirement of the template. So the only breakdown of staff demographics that I'm aware of, the school, the school county report cards that are due every January and February first have staff demographics, but only in terms of credentialing, not an ethnicity erase. This template doesn't have it, specific to student demographics. Usually WASC reports have a specific breakdown, but those are only every.
Three to six years.
So they're only so current. So I mean, that brings up a good question, and what other, and what other way is that either shared or publicized? And I don't know.
Are there any other points of discussion for this? All in favor of passing the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's a great conversation, necessary conversation. Okay, action items, business services. Eleven point one point one, approval of budget revision three for Petaluma City Schools for the nineteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year.
Aye, we have to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eleven point one point two, approval of the preliminary budget for Petaluma City Schools for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution eighteen nineteen dash twenty-two of Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary School District, State of California, approving the petition for renewal of the Live Oak Charter School. I have a motion.
Well, we will, as soon as we move it into.
Okay, I move to approve.
Second, okay, comments?
So we, if I, if I may.
Yes.
So we had our public hearing, was it a month ago?
Yeah.
About a month ago. During the course of last four, three to four weeks, we've worked with Live Oak, we've gone over the petition, we said, here's some of our comments, concerns, they responded, it's kind of gone back and forth, and we came to what we hope is a meeting of minds on the petition. And so that's why we're recommending it tonight for approval, but we definitely have members of the Live Oak staff and board, I think, in the audience, so. That all.
So, do you want to come talk now?
Senator Carr, can I?
For Jason, you've got Jason, Matthew, and Sarah.
So Matthew Morgan.
Hi, I'm Matthew Morgan, I'm the director of Live Oak Charter School. And I'd really just wanna come and thank the board and speak thanks to staff, made a lot of an effort into the review of the charter. Our charter was a charter that was adopted just prior to eleven new legislation in LCAP and whatnot. And so it required a lot of updating, such as unusual perhaps charter charters. And so I just wanna get again to the other things, I keep referencing Chris because she did a lot of leadership in this process. And I know she had a lot of her staff, Cliff and others, working on that, so I just wanna give, give my thanks to that. It was a lot of work, and I'm really glad that we have a document now that is modernized and has all the up-to-date compliance language in there. And I also just wanted to speak just generally about Live Oak Charter School. It's been my baby for the last eight years, and it is such an incredibly special place for learning. It has a staff, I've worked in public schools for many years, I worked at Tyler Park School District for many years. And when I came to Live Oak Charter School, I found a staff that was, I think, without any experience out of prior, nobody more dedicated, more committed to providing education, whole child education for children. Many of our teachers came from other exceptional programs in the Bay Area, but they landed with us because they wanted to have this opportunity to innovate and have some flexibility in that innovation, how to design the program. And that whole language, the whole, whole child approach really does have an emphasis, you were speaking to someone ago, Gary, about the importance of culture and social emotional learning for kids and on the school site. And that's really the heart of water of education, or part of, part of public water of education, is developing different techniques that give us an opportunity to see what kind of impact we can have upon that. We have long-term loops with our teachers, where they spend sometimes three to four years with the same class, developing in-depth relationships with their, with their families. So again, I thank the board and I thank Petaluma City Schools for their support of the program, this is eighteen years for us now. And I appreciate you, you giving us the opportunity, the privilege to work in this community and to continue to innovate and develop this program as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Jason?
Jason, good. Evening, Superintendent Ford. My name is Jason Miller, I'm an attorney for a, a mini-core, represent most of the charter schools in the state. And I wanna commend staff and district legal counsel on the fantastic opportunity we've had of this round of us. So often, we submit a charter and there's radio silence, and on the other end we hear, hey, this is the stuff we're expecting and we didn't see. And that was the exact opposite of this experience. It was a fantastic experience, I really wanna commend staff and legal counsel on giving feedback. Here's where we have concerns, and nothing's perfect, right? So here's concerns, here's how we're gonna fix it, and the meeting of the minds going back and forth. And I, I don't by any means want to, want to press a negative, but I do wanna just point out something or raise a question that's come up. And it's a really esoteric place in law, it's, you know, it's the legal nerd in me that's bringing this up. There is a, a anomaly, if you will, in the location of where Live Oak is in the district, being located there on the, on the county fairgrounds. And there's a discrepancy between the School Finder and between the actual adopted district map of where this is, which elementary district this is located and which elementary attendance area this is located. On the, on the School Finder, it says it's in McDowell Elementary District or a region. On, according to the official maps, apparently it is the McKinley region. And this is just a, you know, an anomaly of it. It really doesn't affect much except for the school, because the other things that are in this little pocket, this is the pocket that's just south of one oh one, is between Lindbury and Washington, north of Perrin. In addition to the charter school, there's a Target, there's a Buffalo Wild Wings, I believe there's a TJ Maxx, you know, none of which really are affected by this. But it does actually affect Live Oak and, and, and a couple of ways. There is a, a provision of law that allows charter schools to give enrollment preference to students in the elementary district in which they're located. If there's a, a proponent of socio-economically disadvantaged students. Live Oak this time around is hoping to be able to provide that advantage to those socio-economically disadvantaged students in the McDowell region. And the reason that's important is because since McKinley's taken on the Gate program, they're now below the fifty-five percent threshold, very, very, very close. I believe it's like fifty-three percent, that allows Live Oak to give this, this preference. So there, there's, there's two obviously important things here. One is the, the advantage that gives the students themselves, socio-economically disadvantaged students in McDowell region, that they wanna attend Live Oak. It's a focus of, of the Live Oak program to extend this to, to more students who are socio-economically disadvantaged. There's a practical reason too, and, and that's around a quarter million dollars, and that's not district money, that's state money. That under SB seven forty would be given back for rental reimbursement for the fairground site if Live Oak happened to be in the McDowell enrollment region rather than in the McKinley enrollment region. And I just wanna bring that up, and I just wanna mention that, because I do think it's important, both for the, for the student body and obviously for the economy of the charter school, that this board has the discretion to, at some point in the near distant future, reconsider those, those lines. And if you, if you did want to reconsider and include Live Oak along with the TJ Maxx and Buffalo Wild Wings to be in the McDowell area, it would mean that we could provide the socio-economically disadvantaged students in the McDowell region with enrollment preference and would be a quarter million dollars extra for the students in the school districts. Again, I don't wanna focus on the negatives, this has been such a fabulous process, and I don't see that very often. Where I work with dozens of, of districts and dozens of counties, and so often it's just, you know, you're, you're hitting each other and this has been a fantastic process, but I do wanna make sure that's been noted and that's something that you guys are, are aware of moving forward. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just to, to clarify on that, the, the School Finder is, is the school mint software developers that actually crunch those numbers and input them, and they inputted that in error. And so we have since sent them the proper coordinates. What happens is that area, that school area is, is McKinley, but because there are no homes in that area, they did not input those into School Finder, into their database, when they, when they did their backend software. So by default, it just throws itself into an area. So we've gone back to clean that up, but we, we know that the School Finder piece is in error.
And Target and Buffalo Wings used to be counted for.
Right.
Isn't it location? I mean, McKinley is like across the street, sort of, from Live Oak, because I live in that area.
Yeah.
McKinley's our school.
Our, our data says six tenths of a mile versus four tenths of a mile between the two elementary schools.
But there's a freeway.
There is a freeway, that, that is true, that is absolutely true, the freeway is a major service. There's a walking bike path, just across the aisle, please don't let me jog through.
Sarah?
So good evening. My name's Sarah Rossi, and I am a parent and board chair of Live Oak Charter. I'm here tonight to thank you as well, the PCS board and your administration for working with Live Oak to get to this point of renewal. It's been a long spring for those of us on the board. And so we are really happy to see this vote, that Live Oak will continue to be an option in Petaluma's portfolio of public-financed grade school education. My husband Michael and I moved to Petaluma about twelve years ago, specifically to access high-quality public education. We were living in San Francisco when we had our second child, and our friends were going zero for eight in the SF public school lottery system. Things changed a little, but not much. We knew that wasn't for us. And Michael had grown up here, attending McNear, Junior High, and Petaluma High, and we felt strongly that Petaluma was the right place for our family. We assumed that our kids would go to Grant with their cousins, and when we toured kindergartens, we felt like Live Oak was the best fit, specifically for our older son. Nine years later, that son graduated from Live Oak last week, and our younger son will start seventh grade this fall there. And while I'm clear that Live Oak has been a good fit for our family, I genuinely celebrate that Petaluma offers multiple really good public education options. I was struck by how integral school choice is to Petaluma community a few weeks ago, when families at the court where I live got together at the end of the school year for a little gathering, someone dragged out a fire pit, and we all stood around and catch up with each other again, because during the school year, all you do is wave and announce for those of us who work during the week and drive kids around as unpaid Uber drivers on the weekends. And I was really discovered, much to my surprise, an incredible variety among my neighbors. So I just pointed it out to you because it struck me and I felt the need to bring it out tonight. So one family has a child who just graduated, graduated from PAX, their middle child is at Grant, and their youngest is at McKinley. The next family has two kids at McNear. Then there was our family, with a kid who just graduated from Live Oak, and my seventh grader. The next family has their oldest at Petaluma High, their middle at PAX, their youngest at McKinley. And the last family had a site trifecta with one ch- child at Petaluma High, the middle at Grant, and their youngest starting kindergarten at McNear. As we all reflected on the year that had just ended, we all seemed pretty satisfied with our children's educational experiences. And I think that's a reflection of where people are at in Petaluma right now, and I think Live Oak is part of that. If not, it will only be a small part of our little court community, but definitely an important part of this portfolio that you guys support. So again, I thank your board for not only supporting Live Oak, but supporting all Petaluma families by providing access to high-quality, public-funded education options that meet the needs of all of our children. And I look forward to Petaluma City Schools continuing to work with Live Oak Charter in the future.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to speak to this item? Then let's vote. All in favor of eleven point one point three?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. And then I'm confused, so eleven point one point four.
Would you like me to explain?
Yes.
Always.
So the charter petition renewal was the item that you just voted on, but we also have a memorandum of understanding that kind of quantifies more specific details of how we work together. And so the MOU, I think before it was like a three-page MOU, it was very sparse, for lack of a better word. And you know, when, when you think about when I came in brand new, almost three years ago now, having an MOU, and now of course Live Oak is gonna have a brand new director, I'm assuming. For someone coming in new, having a well-articulated agreement, so that we know how to work together, is just so critical. When you have institutional knowledge like Mr. Bowman had for many, many decades, you know what I mean? Maybe that institutional knowledge doesn't seem so critical in a document, but coming in new, I can assure you, for me, it is really important. And I, I know for Live Oak, it will be important too. So that's the difference between the two documents, there is the charter petition, and then there's the MOU, which I would echo what was said here, that it's been a very collaborative, I would say positive development of this. It went from three pages to like twenty-two. It's a more standard document that you would expect to find, and I think that it just kind of helps provide that roadmap for how we work together, if that makes sense.
Seems like a lot of work, hopefully less work for everybody in the long run. Well, I move to approve, I think it's awesome.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next is authorization to purchase twenty-two hundred student devices.
So we, you. Yes, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
And Matthew, we wish him.
Yeah, best of luck.
I will see you there a lot at the end.
Good night.
We, our study session, we discussed a lot of, of items. And you know, obviously our concern is sustainability. At this level, you know, we're, we're counting on David and the team and then, and our teachers to come up, you know, with the, with continuing the implementation part, but it's, for us, it's about the sustainability. And how do we do something that will still allow us to continue to attract and retain quality teachers and not have, have Chromebooks or iPads being pitted against salaries and whatnot? And so we did a little bit of additional research, I did a little bit of additional research and dug into some, some case law. And we were able to, to, and got some information back from Google, and we, we do have a little bit of flexibility as far as sale of our units. bit of flexibility as far as sale of our units at the end, as long as we follow a certain process. As well as, you know, the most districts that have gone to a one-to-one initiative also allow bring your own device. And they allow bring your own device nine through 12. And it's, the world has not fallen off of its axis by doing that. In a typical school district, it's a conservative figure at 30%, will choose to bring their own device. Well, that's a game changer for us. And so, you know, we have an opportunity, I think, to kick this can down the road a little bit. If we use a combination of bond monies one time and then do a small contribution each year to the budget, you know, small being somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $100,000 a year, just nothing like $500,000 a year. You know, we, Chris, you know, in that budget reflected that she was able to look at one-time monies that we hadn't spent, that we could look at restricting. And a combination of that and doing a small contribution, that would be enough to do a refresh on those particular items. However, that would be, you know, we've had some discussions about utilizing bond money for the additional purchase for this go-around, but we're done at that point, we've exhausted. We tapped into some of our bond money. But, and we'll have this money for five years down the road. So for at least, for at least nine through 12 and seven and eight, we've pushed this 10 years out if we do that, if we restrict. David will talk a little bit about the devices. And there is an option that we have to, we're going to have to move forward with, and so.
Is that the hundred bucks difference?
Yes.
So the Learning Innovation Committee came with a recommendation for the two-in-one Chromebook that you all had the opportunity to see and touch, and so it has the onboard keyboard and a touchscreen, and can flip over and be in a tablet mode and have the ability to take a photo and view the photo that you're taking. So that was the recommendation and the logic behind having the added feature of the, what they call a world facing camera, was a concern that some students would not have access to another camera and therefore would be limited in what they could do from a multimedia perspective and a presentational perspective. That's the two-in-one. A standard Chromebook, similar size, also 11 inch screen, that would not have a touchscreen. Still the same spill resistant keyboard, still, and it would not have the tablet mode where the flipovers, so it goes flat.
It doesn't have a camera.
It doesn't have the camera, except it does have the selfie camera, which is not a high priority to students or educators at this point, but there might be some potential there as far as communication and using it for conferencing, virtual conferencing, certainly in the business world, we do that often. So the key differences are touchscreen, world facing camera, and you know, lack of tablet mode.
So are all the two-in-ones Lenovo and all of the not two-in-ones Dell, is that a difference too?
We would be looking at Dell hardware for both. Yeah, because of just better support.
That's what the guys that work for the district of actual like really, really technically great. Dell was better.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering, there's a price differentiation between Dell and the other?
There typically would be, but with Dell, they should, but price match with Dell. So.
It is a hundred dollars difference per unit. And.
Oh, what's that?
Well, there's 2,200 something.
Is there going to be, will there be like tablets alone, like if a student has a project like KTV, or like if they have to do an iMovie or something like that? Like are there options or like sets of, you know, like let's say that we do just go with the regular Chromebook, and they have a project where they need a camera, are there going to be extra tablets, like on the first student who don't have? Or iPads? Yeah, I'm sorry, that's like, yeah.
Yes, the committee has, the volunteers of the devices, top has discussed having the iPads available in the carts, like currently we have Chromebooks available in carts, so flipping it to some degree so that there would be iPads available.
Because right now, they're, they all have iPads, right?
Right.
They're kind of at the end of their life, or can they still be used like for a project? I mean, they're still good enough to be able to do that.
Absolutely, yeah, we're going to redeploying all of those iPads down to the elementary grades as well. So they're year four, and we're trying to get five, you know, five years out of them.
And not all of them are year four, some of them are newer because they were broken and replaced, they lost and replaced.
Well, and if they were just being used for camera and, you know, lighter use, I mean, I have an iPad that is probably from 2010, and it can still take photos, that's all it can do. But you know, like the equity issue, because a phone, then at least they could use that for. Because I, yeah, I don't think we can ignore a $220,000 savings. If I'm doing my math right.
I'm assuming you are.
I can't afford to get back to my phone.
And just to, clicking down the line, I know this discussion, we're talking about refreshes at the high school and the plan to, you know, sock away this amount of money for the next refresh. And the plan, the integration with the junior highs and elementary is that the high school old machines would be triple down, that there isn't a refresh at the junior high and elementary school, is that correct?
At the junior high.
There will be at the junior high next time, yes.
Yes.
And then, well then there needs to be a discussion about what does a refresh mean? We're assuming right now that refresh means one-to-one at the junior high. We, we're not assuming that at the elementary. There's been other discussions with elementary staff, and there's some divergent opinion more on that. So that'll be something that they'll have to come back and give us a recommendation of.
So if we, just thinking down the line, factoring in refreshes at the junior high level, what are we talking about in terms of an amount we need to put into this savings, you know, for the, to buy us the next cycle?
So that is, that is the, with the, with, if we're looking at like a $100,000 contribution plus the one time, that'll be enough to cover all the junior high and the high school.
And what we're voting on here, the authorization to purchase, are we voting on which one? Or just that we're purchasing?
We're asking for some direction on the device. We knew that if we did not put this, so we're fighting a time element now. And so by not putting this on, we couldn't even have this opportunity to even talk about it. But we're going to need to, we, it'll be tight already as it is, so we need to make a decision. We know the device, you know, we've done the work, the legwork related to the device has been pretty clean. The question's always been, how are we going to fund this? But the paradigm, that paradigm was always based on everybody getting a device. And what we're saying now is, no, we're going to allow people to bring their own device, plus we're going to also allow folks to purchase a device when, as they leave. Of course, that won't be an option that's available for seniors and juniors, because we need those devices, but it will be for freshmen and sophomore. And technology's not particularly pleased about this, but the plan, the plan is if, unless they've taken insurance, if an item breaks, we're replacing it with a current Chromebook that we have in used stock. They'll get a device, they just won't get, they won't get the new device. We don't have the resources to do that.
So students can pay for their own insurance and then get the same level of advice back?
Yes.
And so the devices that are in storage are the basic Chromebooks, right?
Yes, they're, they're about four to five years old.
So we're saying that there's three options, that you could bring your own device, and we're going to encourage people to, and we're, and they will be able to get the price that we get. That's our goal, is to get the retailer to give us a price that we're getting for people that want to buy it on their own. They can check one out from school and maintain insurance, and it would be $50 a year insurance, or $150 would cover you for four years. And then another option is that freshman and sophomore students that can check it out from school, maintain insurance, they could purchase it at the end of their senior year, and freshman and sophomore students who maintain insurance every year, so whether that's $50 a year or $150 at one time, they'd be able to purchase their device for $25 as they left. And so, which is, which is, which is an incentive to taking the insurance.
Right.
Because essentially.
So insurance is required, right?
But insurance is not required. No, everybody will get, everybody will get a device. It's just we can't guarantee that, just like with textbooks. If you lose your textbook, we're going to give you an edition of the textbook. Or it may not be the new one, it might be the older one. This might be not the new computer, but it's going to be a very, very functional Chromebook. So we just.
And buy all of my Spanish textbooks senior year because I spilled coffee all over the chipmunks.
But most importantly, what this does is it doesn't, it doesn't restrict our ongoing, our ongoing ability to do some other things with staff.
And David, what's your sense from faculty of maybe preference on those machines?
So the two-in-one is what the faculty recommended essentially. The surveys results showed the favor of the two-in-one over the standard Chromebook. Though I have heard some anecdotal perspective that the cost saving benefit, you know, is appealing.
Yes, very. Well, in the district, we might also choose, because we've got the million dollars for the one time, the district may, the board may, maybe in our best interest, open a special fund separate from the general fund 17, for example, which is a special reserve for non-capital. So that, much like an annuity, you put the million dollars aside, and it generates its own interest, the insurance money goes in it, and you know what I mean, it's kind of a way to, to.
Speed.
To be able to leverage the one-time funds that are put there with some interest rates as interest rates are rising a bit, you know, we're not getting 1/10th of 1% anymore. You know, we're getting not 10 basis points, but you know, maybe 40 basis points of interest. So that may be another thing that we can consider come July, that in 1920, we kind of make those types of recommendations so we can kind of solidify accounting for it truly separately in its own fund and letting it generate its own interest earnings.
So what's your take on the $100 difference?
You are talking to the business person.
I know that.
You know what the answer is.
Yeah, I know what the answer is.
I think, I think the most important thing we can do is have a sustainable plan. I mean, we've put, we've invested a significant amount of time and energy curriculum wise, professional development wise, into having these types of student devices. And so I think the most important thing we can do for our community is to have a sustainable plan. So I support developing that plan and, I think that the device.
You're not going to answer my question, are you?
The device is less important in some ways, I mean, it's $100, it's $220,000, so yeah, if I have my brother's Chromebook, standard. But, but I think, you know, the reality is, three years from now, who knows what the device is going to be? Two years from now, who knows what the device is going to look like? Even a year from now, right? I mean, future devices that will be, much like my budget's already on the thing.
We have 195 two-in-ones that are, that will be deployed regardless next year, they're new.
Oh, we have them already.
They were part of the pilot.
Yeah.
So those are already going to be deployed. You know, it's a crapshoot because we, when Chromebooks came out, Chromebooks have really evolved, but you never know about the durability of a vendor from year to year. It's like a car, and they've been great for a number of years, but you know, it, there's something to, I guess there's something to the recommendation. The whole purpose was, give us a recommendation, give us a call, they gave us a call on something, and we can, we can sustain that.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, we asked Dave all year to do this pilot, he piloted, he heard what they had say, they wanted the two-in-one, and they gave us really good reasoning as to why. You know, we asked him to do all that work, and he was like, well, too bad, you know, that's just how I feel about it. So I would recommend to go with what the committee is recommending, since they did all the work. We asked them for their opinion, and we gave them, like we did say, this would be an option, not like, well, actually not, because it's too much.
Right.
Why do we give them the option that we're not going to explore? That's just ideal, you know?
I'm curious if Cliff or David heard, you know, heard discussions among the faculty in their favor for that pedagogic advantage to that two-in-one, rather than just bells and whistles.
I can speak to that. And so as we looked toward implementing technology and learning, and we often rate how we're implementing, it's called SAML, and where the first side of it is substituting something that we do analog work, and then moving over to augment the modification and redefinition. As we move over along on the SAML toward redefinition, a lot of the activities tend to be media rich and have opportunities to synthesize, create objects, artifacts that require some level of multimedia capability. And what, the big liability of moving away from an iPad is that you don't have the same onboard media production capabilities that you have just out of the box on anything else. And so this offers the potential of that, and I think that that is a big part of why that has been the priority for the, from the teaching perspective, is that it gives us the greater potential to move toward the redefinition and to not just, you know, be using a device because we have to, but to be really reimagining how we're learning and interacting with information through the use of technology. I honestly did push back on this, you know, from the fiscal perspective, support perspective, you know, the majority seemed to be interested in Google apps and keyboards, but the educators, the people at the sites really worked hard and were proponents for this device. So I, you know, I did raise some concerns, and they really held their ground that this is what they wanted to recommend, so.
The only negative thing I heard was just brand loyalty, you know, Lenovo, Dell, just that whole thing, but, I mean, nothing against the device.
But just definitely the two-in-one is what most teachers want, yes?
I would say as far as going from an iPad, this is a logical next step. We're not going totally away from the multimedia options to just a laptop. It's kind of a hybrid, it's a tablet, it's got the dual cameras, you know, so we still have those capabilities. You know, I would say, this is just my two cents, but you know, if the iPad had a built-in keyboard or was more durable, you know, we may not be having some of these discussions, but clearly these devices are responsible, clearly these devices. They give us those, they're built in, they're durable, much more so than, you know, an iPad. I love my iPad. I love my iPad, but, right, in the hands of, of you, iPads don't last long, so.
Chris, do you see a way of, of this, that the two-in-one being sustainable?
I think, I, I mean, honestly, I think we're going to have to identify a funding source.
Yeah.
From a long-term perspective.
Yeah.
I think that we've done a really good job of scraping together a five or six-year plan.
Maybe ten.
But it's just that, I mean, I, I think that we need to identify a funding source, whether it's a grant or whether it's. That, that's my two cents on it. And I, I, I think that if the community wants us to have one-to-one devices, they need to support, support that initiative.
Yeah, because it's, it's really, I mean, it, it, it kicks a refresh down ten years, but it doesn't, you have to have a plan in place by year six. Because now you're planning for that year-ten purchase. So, and it might be that we find out that our, you know, going back to, you know, like, we, we just spent a lot of time on some projections. We, we may be pleasantly surprised at how many people bring their own or what our return of investment is on our, our self-insurance. We may find that, that, or we may find that, you know, down the road, that what we don't know is, is what is really going to be the, the cost of these devices, you know, years down the road, so.
Well, we also don't know the cost of what the elementary is going to look like.
Yeah.
Don't, I mean, so there's, to me, there's still, there's still a lot I know. So it's hard for me to say, do I think this is sustainable? I don't know, I mean.
But.
If we went in just nine through twelve, but maybe.
But you're, you're correct in raising the point that, you know, if we commit with this, then we are committing to finding a sustainable.
Yes. And then ultimately, the district committed to that five years ago without having a thoughtful.
And now we're all here.
Right, I mean, that's, I mean, honestly, that's.
Literally, was anyone here five?
Nope, nope.
But not us. Does PFT want to?
Well, even in terms of that, I mean, I just heard that teachers, you know, there was the pilot of the Chromebooks and they recommended Chromebooks and they went iPad, so.
Right.
I don't want to do that again, I don't want to do that again either.
We thanked for a plan before the first one was.
Yeah, we, we asked, we asked very clearly, so I think our five years of funding would come from the long-term.
So we're very happy this is happening now.
It isn't that they asked for iPads per se, there was a last-minute meeting where a small group, they said, no. Oh, it's a Chromebooks version, that also they said, no. It happened very quickly. So we do, in example, getting to everybody, to every site, there's been a lot of opportunity to evolve.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I think Joanna has.
Yes, I'm moving.
And do we need to identify the type that we're?
Yeah, she needs to move exactly what she's moved.
And move to authorize purchase of the two-in-one.
How many of them?
Twenty-two hundred.
Two-in-one.
Yeah, two-in-one.
With the camera.
With the camera, the.
I'll take it.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, there we go.
I wasn't about to let you fail.
You did perfect. You did wonderfully. Okay, the authorization to purchase a hundred staff MacBook, MacBook Air laptops.
Let's do it again.
Is this a refresh for faculty?
I will, I will tell you, and, and we can tag Tim a little bit, I mean, again, I think that I've, I've harped on this on numerous occasions. We need a, we need a, a staff, this is really mostly about teachers, but it's really a staff device. A staff computer replacement plan. And this is really kind of the second phase in that, we've already done some of that in the past, I would say eighteen months. But David has done a great job going, getting us a great deal, purchasing a hundred staff MacBook Air laptops.
Because MacBook is more expensive than.
But these are six ninety-nine.
That's not bad.
Which is, like, if we buy a hundred, six ninety, and I will tell you, I have worked with Apple over the decades trying to give them, get them to, like, hey, we're going to purchase a whole bunch of these and they're, oh, well, we'll give you a five-dollar discount.
The educator discount is very.
Right, so, I mean, I think David's done an extraordinary job working with them, trying to get some, some good discounts. And we, again, we purchased these laptops in early two thousand fifteen-ish. I know they rolled out more slowly, so not everybody got them in early two thousand fifteen. But we need to start replacing them, and not everyone, we actually have some older devices when we looked at the inventory. You know, two thousand twelve.
Right.
Two thousand thirteen, so we need to really begin that process. We have four hundred and fifty bargaining unit members roughly, not FTE, but actual people. Across the spectrum, counselors, librarians.
They all want the MacBook.
Well, they all have devices that we have to start replacing. And so this represents roughly twenty percent of over, you know what I mean, twenty-five percent. So I think this is a good start. And we had set aside a budget to make these purchases, so we, we have been planning, because having a, a teacher having a computer is not an option.
Right.
Not having a computer. A teacher having a computer is not a question. They need a computer. Maybe if they type a computer, it could be a question, but.
Right.
I wanted just to speak to the, the comment question, comment about, you know, the teachers want the MacBook Air. We surveyed the, the certificate of staff about student devices and about their preferences for devices. And overwhelmingly, certificate of staff said that they would like to have a choice over which device they're, they're offered or issued. And overwhelmingly, they said they'd like to use a MacBook. So, you know, both of those responses were in the ninety percent range. So we will plan to offer a choice that, down the road, between, you know, to offer the PC option. But the number of PCs that we'll be needing to offer is a much, much smaller number.
I, I'm an Apple girl, I mean, I wouldn't want a PC, so.
Well, and it seems that the majority of our, our teaching staff would prefer to stay with the MacBooks where they've been and.
But the ten percent who want the choice is really, like, if someone tried to force me to use an Apple.
Right. So she's gone back to.
So we do plan to offer, offer an option.
Okay.
Yeah, down the road, because again, this is only about twenty percent of our, of our replacement. But it's a good first step and the price point that we're getting is pretty remarkable.
So, I just had a comment, maybe you can clarify. From what I understand, when we first adopted these years ago, teachers got two devices. They got an iPad and a MacBook. So now, it might, we're just going with the one device. So, you know, much more chance.
Damn, who was in the pocket of the iPad lobby? Somebody really liked.
The rhetorical.
Well, the reason we have the iPad is just that we actually couldn't stand what the kids were doing, so we couldn't keep up.
Sure, no, totally, yeah.
There's totally different interface. I mean, if I'm on my computer trying to explain to them what to do with the lesson, they're looking at me like, what are you talking about?
No, totally, I'm just.
You have to turn it, it's different interface.
Yeah.
So maybe we should continue with the, the device.
Right, if you're a Chrome.
But until we run different places, but usually the browser speaks to the device in particular.
And the, yeah, the Chrome browser will run them. The Chromebook?
Different, they look different.
The, the web version is the same on the MacBook and on the Chromebook, so.
Okay, do we have a motion for eleven point one point six?
Move to authorize to purchase a hundred staff MacBook Air laptops.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we are on discussion. Receive of the sixth grade academy at Pedalinga Junior High charter school renewal petition.
We held a public hearing.
Right.
And now you're actually officially receiving.
I gave it to you.
Did we receive that?
Was it an attachment?
It was an attachment in the.
Yeah.
Any discussion about that? Future business.
Okay, very.
Very, very. I feel a budget.
Yeah, you know what, I would. So we were going to try to schedule a day for goal-setting, planning.
Oh, yes.
I met with Peggy Lent from City Manager. And she shared a little bit about, you know, their, their day. I think that it sounds, it sounds like what the board will have to make some decisions on is, it's kind of a pro, it, it is, there's pros and cons to doing something in July. The cons are, we can't really have teachers there, or at least expect folks to be there. And I think that it's, for sure, I think that whatever date we select, maybe two board members will serve with me on an ad hoc committee to help kind of plan, you know, what do we want this to be? Theirs was kind of an organic process and it, it was about talking to the community about, well, what do you want? In this case, from your city, ours would be, what do you want from your schools? And, and then from there, having information that you can synthesize back into a plan. So they just kind of invited everybody under the sun to that and fed people, had daycare. Did it on a Saturday. So.
What about the first week of August? We went to a board meeting in August.
Like the sixth?
Yeah, are, yeah, are those dates in?
I know, July is the sixteenth. It's August thirteenth, we only have one.
Yeah, August thirteenth.
It's August thirteenth? Okay.
The third is, the third works for me anyways. I've got, I've got classes, I have a class.
Saturday.
The tent doesn't.
August third works for me.
Yeah, it works for me too. We want every. What about the tent?
The tent doesn't. Seventeenth does though.
I could do the seventeenth.
I could do the seventeenth.
Seventeenth works.
And we're talking like ten to four.
Yeah, nobody's going to get there before ten.
I'm not.
When it passes, it's Saturday at eight.
Oh, yeah, we'll send invites out to, to, you know, everyone.
And we can also, since we have a board meeting on the thirteenth, we can also announce that the board meeting.
So we're looking at August seventeenth.
And where are we going to do this?
Well, I'll ask Michelle to reach out to Lucasey first. And if, if not that, we, you know, really the best, the best place for us after that is one of the, the multi at one of the high school.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Actually, probably one part of the high school, but Lucasey, we saw it with alternative ed graduation.
I think the, the, and I don't know for sure, but I think that symbolically, I think Matty was thinking Lucasey's more neutral turf.
And it's kind of halfway between east and west, so.
But we can, we'll, we can reach out and then it would be matter, a matter of coordinating who wants to be on a committee or.
Well, I don't have jobs over the summer. I don't know what else.
I will be more than summer.
And I think Matty would be more than.
Or maybe Joanna would like to.
I work all year.
Oh, you do? You didn't have summer vacation, right? I guess it's.
I mean. Bring stuff back. Okay, so we're looking at tentatively August seventeenth. And like, you know, I, I would probably say ten to three.
Okay.
I don't think you're going to get anybody that's going to stay at four. But, but that's plenty of time. And, and then we would have to, I think it's a data gathering session more than anything. And, and getting a sense of what's also the, that's out in the community. And then that'll guide our work. I think it's really a little bit overblown, the, you have to have certain goals, goals set at a certain time in a year. I mean, we work through, this is a year-round situation. When we set goals, we set goals and then we work towards completing those goals. So I think this will work just great. And we will mention it as well with our, with what we're working with PFT.
Okay.
Variety, different things that will be going out.
So I think having teachers there is very important.
You know, because there's lots of stuff that are, I think there are a lot of things that are out that we're going to hear that are not going to be surprising, but maybe we need to hear it again. Like one of the things that I heard loud and clear from people that are not educators, which was really interesting to see how consistent it was, was I don't know how my grandkids are going to be able to live in this town. Over and over and over, I don't know if, how my kids are going to be able to.
But that's nothing we can control.
Well, it was, but some of it was tied to, you know, we heard from parents, things like, I'm trying to explain to my, my daughter that this is the kind of wage they're going to have to earn. You have to prepare yourself to be truly college or career-ready.
So that would be a goal.
So what does that mean, college and career-ready? I would think that college and career-ready means that you can afford to live in Palma. How about that as a, you know, because if you're not, then you're, you know, you're fighting that uphill battle. That's all I got.
Any, anything else?
Yes, next time I want to discuss what it would cost to provide childcare at our meetings. And get maybe a cost analysis of all of that.
And you know, along that same vein, and I think especially for the school thing, is translation.
And then something else Ellen and I talked a little bit about is what can we do as a board to put out a statement about white supremacy in our schools? I think it would be important for us to make a statement.
Yeah, I mentioned that to Gary, he was talking about maybe in August.
A resolution or something.
Yeah.
Before school starts.
Yeah. So can I just, like, write a resolution and send it and have it on my agenda?
Yeah.
I love it, I can write.
And that would be awesome.
Well, and I think I can probably talk to one other person about it without breaking the Brown Act, so. If anyone's dying to also help me, I'm glad to.
Yeah, she's whereas.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have a lot in student government. I was the queen of legislation, every single session I had like three bills.
Well, we also, we put out something about climate change, so that might be, you might want to look at that as a template, maybe.
There's some good stuff out there.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to make sure that was kind of the right way to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Go about that. And then can, if I donate a rainbow flag to Palma City Schools, can we fly it out there for the rest of June?
Where's out there?
I don't know, I feel like you have a flagpole here somewhere.
We do have a flagpole, but I think there's regulations around the United States and California flags, so I think we should look into it.
It does have to be below those two, right, it just can't be on top.
From a school district, we just need to look into it and make sure that we're not, because we're a state organization, we're a state, we're a state entity, so we just need to make sure.
Yeah, if y'all can double-check or I can.
Can you look into that?
Yeah, I can double-check about it, but.
Yeah, I know that Antioch School District just did it, so. I know that Antioch School District just did it, so, but yeah. And I will happily donate a flag.
Okay, now we need to.
You want to iron it first?
I won't iron it first, I don't have an iron.
You have, you have, you have, just announcing it on the vote on. First item.
Okay, yes, the acceptance of the compromise release agreement, case nine four five four, has been accepted. And then we have one student, case forty-nine, a case that's been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Ed Code. The recommended motion is for the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district operated school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semester. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the fall and spring semesters of the two thousand nineteen twenty twenty school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, life skills, anger management counseling program, community service, and appropriate academic performance. All in favor?
I want a second.
I just thought I heard you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, and.